Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to reopen the Morganton, November 3rd, 2014, City Council meeting. Thank you for all being here. You missed a little of the fireworks earlier this evening. I hate that. Let me start off by asking our city councilman, Forrest Fleming, to lead us with our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you much, and please be seated.
At this time, our friend Pastor Timothy Fortune of the Horizon Church is going to lead us with our invocation. Thank you for being here, Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor, for having me. Let us pray. Father, we bless you and honor you, and we thank you for this day that you've given us. Father, we thank you for this wonderful community that we live in and the men and women who work so hard and so diligently to make this community what it is. Father, we ask for your wisdom and your knowledge and your understanding tonight, Father, at this meeting. We pray that you would just give insight, Father, and just ask for your wisdom and knowledge. And we thank you for all that you're doing, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Tell your wife hello for us. Okay. Introduction to our City Council on my far right is Ronnie Thompson, City Councilman, Forrest Fleming, City Councilman, Louie Vina, our City Attorney, I'm Mel Cohen, your Mayor, Sally Sandy, our City Manager, Sidney Simmons, City Councilman, John Cantrell, City Councilman, and Kelly Russell, Recording Secretary for us. And over in the corner is Becky Brinkley, yeah, there she is, interpreting for our deaf community. Again, I want to welcome each and every one of you here and tell you a few things coming up in the coming days, but first, I'm going to read a proclamation. And Tom Hartman, Executive Director of the House of Refuge Ministries, if you'd come to the microphone over here on my right. Proclamation, Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 15, 23, 2014. Whereas the past 25 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and the Burke County Continuum of Care has been actively working to end hunger and homelessness in Burke County. And whereas, the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Burke County for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers as well as community service opportunities for citizens, students, and school service organizations. And whereas, there are many organizations committed to sheltering, providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness, including Alpha, a Carrying Alternative, Burke County Department of Social Services, Burke County Public Schools, Burke County United Way, Burke United Christian Ministries, Catawba Valley Behavioral Health Care, Christ-Centered Recovery Program, Easter Seals, UCP, House of Refuge, Legal Aid of North Carolina, North Carolina Department of Commerce, North Carolina Vocational Rehabilitation Options Incorporated, Partners Behavioral Health Management, the Cognitive Connection, the Meeting Place Mission, the Outreach Center, Universal Mental Health, Veterans Representatives, and many more community partners. And whereas, the Morganton City Council recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Burke County and the city of Morganton. Whereas, the intent of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the activities of the Burke Continuum of Care. Now therefore be it resolved that the Morganton City Council hereby proclaim November 15 through 22, 2014 as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Be it further resolved that the Morganton City Council encourage all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private, public, nonprofit services entities. Issue this the 4th day of November, 2014. Mel Cohen, Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Make this an informal motion. All in favor, say aye. Tom, you're welcome to say anything you'd like.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's a blessing and an honor to appear before you and receive the proclamation. Thank you very much. I'm here, of course, on behalf of our Continuum of Care in Burke County, and thankful to represent the House of Refuge. And we have a very wonderful partnership with all the associations in our community, and I believe that all the efforts combined are doing a good work. We appreciate your interest, your support, and the care that you've shown in presenting this proclamation. If you don't mind, just a word about the House of Refuge. Since it turned a little colder, we reached our capacity, which is 16, and we went, we're able, in times of freezing weather, wind chill and such, to welcome in a few others. And so, we went to 18 in our numbers over the weekend, and we're very blessed to be able to accommodate them with a meal and a place to stay. The official number, being 16, is our capacity, which we've been around 14 for most of the summer months, and then toward the cooler fall time, we're getting close to that capacity. But we're privileged to be able to provide an evening meal, a warm meal, and a fresh, clean bed for each guest to sleep in, and we provide access to shower and laundry facilities. And we've been blessed with a wonderful building, and we're grateful for that. We also can have access with other agencies to different counseling services, mental and emotional counseling, medical, dental care, and we're also able to help with job placement and vocational rehab, and some educational opportunities as well. And so, we strive at the House of Refuge to help the whole person, of course, and lead them from a greater sense of dependency to more of an independence about their lifestyle. And so, it's a challenge, and it's also a blessing and very rewarding, and we, again, appreciate the support. And I believe one of our very good partners, Tina Willis, would like to share some upcoming events that the Continuum of Care is involved in, and we're, again, always grateful for the community support we receive. So, thank you very much.
Tom, and I didn't officially introduce you. You're Tom Hartman, Executive Director of the House of Refuge Ministries, and thank you for being here. Tina?
I will be very brief. I appreciate the attention for the proclamation. I gave Kelly an iCare tour. This is one of our big events that we really want participation from, from the community. It's an opportunity to see what resources are available in the community for those that are struggling with hunger and homelessness. The event is November 20th, and you can sign up through the Burke County United Way. The Halo event is an event that will be kicking off our week on Saturday, and that is geared towards the youth of churches, and so Suzie Fitzgerald, I think, always heads that up. And then, our iCare tour is our other big event. If you see us around town, we are wanting to get some folks out on Monday as part of the week starts to just bring awareness. We'll have some signs, so we want to caution everyone not to read the signs too closely. We'll make them big enough so we won't cause accidents or anything. But we just want to bring attention to homelessness and this cold weather that we had this weekend is just the start of it, I believe. So, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We have another resolution we're going to ask to pass in just a minute, but for Dee Blackwell, 40 years of service to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and he's having a retirement reception on December 18th. He is a great employee for Western Piedmont Council, and I'd like to have a motion that we accept the resolution, certificate of appreciation. All right, have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Okay. Next item is an update on the Kate B. Reynolds Foundation Healthy Places, North Carolina Initiative. Sally?
Several of you had the opportunity to attend the community forum and a community kickoff meeting. Burke County has been chosen as one of the recipients of Healthy Places, North Carolina, by Kate B. Reynolds, and that is an opportunity over the next 10 years to partner with community partners and with the Reynolds Foundation in order to make Burke County a healthier place. And there's going to be a lot of activities, a lot of things going on with this. It is very broad-reaching. It is a great program. There's a lot of things in here that are talked about, some of the things that we're doing, some of the things I think our community can get better at by working with each other. This is being coordinated through the Community Foundation, and Nancy Taylor is helping with that. And we have many things coming on this, and just wanted to make everyone aware of it if you haven't had the chance. Also wanted to play for you one of the clips that was played at one of the community forums and the leadership meeting from a mayor in Mississippi, I believe, either Mississippi or Alabama. I think it's Mississippi, talking about the kinds of things in communities that you do to start turning your community into a healthier place. Chad?
Hernando is the county seat of DeSoto County, Mississippi. And as close as 1990, we were just about 2,500 people. We've been very rapidly growing since then. In the last census, we were over 14,000 people. We have really been encouraging this culture of health. And in 2010, Mississippi's Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation named us the healthiest town in Mississippi, and it was really an honor and a culmination of a lot of things that have been going on since '05.
Towns have always been in the business of protecting health. It just went to a different level, and this is a level where we take down the barriers to access to active living and healthy eating for the community.
As a policymaker, I use the county health rankings, first of all, just to let our people know how we're doing. We can't change the policies unless the people are behind us, and so having the data from county health rankings out there helps us educate the people so that they can support us in our policy change.
It's so important to have solid policy that will last and become the cornerstone of the culture.
I'm a big proponent of health and a healthy community, but I'm not always going to be the mayor here. So, I think it's very important that we put policies in place that will still be here when I'm gone. For instance, the no-smoking law in Hernando. That's one of the few things that I think a mayor and an elected board can do that will actually, very literally, save lives. Have you seen these sidewalk plans?
I have.
I'm a big proponent of the built environment and its effect on health. In Hernando, since 2001, we've had a standard in place that requires sidewalks and all-new development built with developers' money, and that's something we could have never afforded to put in, but policy put those sidewalks in place.
Complete streets policy is a statement of principle, that we will include all modes of transportation. Safe biking is very important to the people in Hernando.
It's usually something we can afford to do, so as we come up with these small amounts of money, we're striping bike lanes just as fast as we can. Our policy in Hernando requires that developers set aside 10% of their land for open space. Lee Summit Park is a park that was born out of our policy, and now we have a 20-acre park with a half-mile of trails, playground equipment, a pond.
We have the bike trail and the walking trail.
We're able to get this property from these builders so we can go out and create these neighborhood parks, and those seem to bring a community together, and it helps us to be better people. When you're more healthy, more physically fit, you're a better employee, you're a better father, a better mother, and a better citizen of Hernando.
The city of Hernando is participating in the Blue Cross and Blue Shield Healthy Workplace Program.
Are your average paychecks ready for me to sign by this afternoon? They came back to us and said that they were decreasing our health insurance premiums by 15%, and we were able to literally take that savings and give a 2% across-the-board pay raise to all of our employees.
Get some reps so you can keep your heart rate up.
Another piece of our wellness program for the employees is we found a gym that would give us some equipment, so we're going to be setting that up in an empty warehouse. It's not the best facility, but it's what we have. Very literally, our Healthy Workplace Initiative saved our taxpayers $130,000 last year.
Want to give about 10 more reps of these?
When our entire budget is just $13 million, $130,000 is a big number.
Nice, nice, nice. I like it. I like it. Here we go. All the way through, Tony, all the way through.
Joint use agreements are very important. It's a great way to combine resources and use schools for after-school activities.
Good job.
We don't have our own gym, but there are three gyms in this town, and they're all owned by the school system. So, that's how we run our basketball program.
When you have the numbers that they have to show up for basketball programs and soccer programs, there was obviously a lot of pent-up need in the community.
Get it, get it, get it, get it, little guy!
Hernando Bicycle Club is one of our best partners in health attainment in Hernando.
You can see them out there every Saturday morning. When you see 40 cyclists riding past your house, you can't help but want to get out and do something.
They want beginners to start to bike, so they work very closely with folks that are just beginning to bike.
They're creating a healthy environment for all of us. They're encouraging the rest of us to come out and do the right thing.
The Hernando Farmers Market is now open. Bountiful blessings to all!
The Farmers Market's probably one of the best things we've ever done because it is multi-dimensional.
Our Farmers Market serves a variety of purposes. It's a great way to bring community together. The other thing is, though, it gives you access to healthy food, and not just for a certain segment of your community. We made certain that this Farmers Market is within walking distance of one of our poorest neighborhoods.
We do have some of our vendors who participate in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program with EBT cards, and also the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program, which gives vouchers to seniors.
They taste like summer.
It's just been growing exponentially, and we now have over 120 vendors signed up, and we have the largest Farmers Market in the state, and we have the seventh-favorite large market in the United States. I think my main motivation is the thing that motivates almost everyone when they hear that this generation of children may be the first generation not to live as long as their parents. There's no way you can disregard that information. So, even though we're in the healthiest county in Mississippi, and we were named the healthiest town, we look around and see all the things that we still need to do. So, we're going to continue to move forward. We're not stopping.
A great film, but I will tell you that Morganton has so much of many of the amenities that they have. We don't have the organized way to maybe get people to eat certain kinds of food, but your community has about everything that was said in this film, and it's highly used by county people as well as city people.
And I think that's the point, and hopefully, that brings to light the things that we are trying to do, contribute to that. We certainly aren't done, and we have more that we can do, and we will partner with the community to do even more. But I hope you do see some things in there that we've already started working on toward a healthier community.
And I'll mention on that issue, I went to cut a ribbon today at Vocational Rehabilitation and Hydrophonic Program that people in Morganton are not aware of, and I'm hoping that News Herald will do something to make the public aware. You've seen it, in fact, I was eating dinner tonight and saw it on UNC television, public television, about the hydrophonics in other communities and all. We have a tremendous, tremendous facility over at the VR Building off of Vinaula Road, and if you haven't seen it, you need to go over and look at it. They're doing a fabulous job, and I took my wife over because she's a big in-the-garden and it opened her eyes of things that can be done by each and every one by hydrophonics. Sally may want to talk to you a little bit about, we're having the Cleverly's Thursday night, November 6th, at Kama. Sally, you might want to tell us a little bit about what's coming up with Kama this week, where we're at.
Well, we have the show scheduled at Kama on Thursday. Tomorrow, Kama was scheduled to be a polling place for the election. This afternoon, around 4 o'clock-ish, there was a fire at Kama, and mostly smoke damage, really no fire damage, all smoke damage and smell and smoke at this point. They're still trying to get the smoke out of Kama. It appears that we had a fire in the elevator shaft and the motor of the elevator. Am I getting all that right enough? Public Safety responded, and they're still over there working. And currently, we believe that the election site is being moved. They are looking, and it may possibly, I don't know what site it will move to. They're exploring several sites. I don't want to say one. They will come out with what that is, and certainly, we can help with signage over there and try to figure out how to get people where they need to be tomorrow. So, we are not sure what will be happening there by Thursday.
But anyway, the Cleverly's will be in Morganton.
Somewhere.
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 Mama Mia, Wednesday, November 12th, a New York Broadway show that is outstanding. Memorial Tree Lighting is Saturday, November 22nd, at the Old Courthouse grounds at 5:30 PM. There'll be other festivities on the grounds at the same time. Special Holiday Farmers Market on Saturday, November 22nd, and Saturday, December 13th. City Hall's going to be closed Veterans Day, Tuesday, November 11th, and Thanksgiving holiday is Thursday and Friday, November 27 and 28. Municipal Power Agency.
Actually, I have a couple of other things under announcements, if you will allow me. One thing I wanted to say, you know, for years and years, the Rotary Club of Morganton has had their annual pancake breakfast, and they had it this Saturday, and it was a great event. Ron George, who used to work with Burke County and who used to work with us, who has since retired, was, for the first time, the organizing person for Rotary for that event. And this morning, I received a very nice email from him thanking the staff, naming a lot of the staff members that went above and beyond and worked hard to make that event the event that it was, as it always has been, and for that, I'm really grateful. But I just wanted to read the last paragraph of this because I think it's important. Ron says, "When I worked at the city, I always felt that our folks went above and beyond to help make community events a success. It is a great feeling to have seen the city staff working from the outside and to still come away with that same feeling." So, thank you.
Very good.
And I'm not done yet. I have a lot to say tonight. And I am going to pass you guys out a magazine because you're going to have a reading assignment, and I'm going to give you a test. And all of you listening out there in the audience, you can have a test later, too, because what I'm getting ready to talk about, I think, is pretty cool and pretty important. Public Management, and I have props tonight. Public Management is a magazine that comes out monthly to all the members of the International City and County Management Association, and I did say international. There are over 9,000 members of this organization worldwide. The November 2014 issue just came out, and it is entitled, "Rethinking Economic Development." And it says, "The stakes are high, the innovation's many, and the result's promising." And the whole magazine is dedicated to economic development. Now, what I think is really special about this, because economic development is pretty big buzz, it covers the gamut. It talks about how economic development used to work. It talks about how it works today. A couple of things that it says in here, we heard earlier tonight about struggling economy in this area. It says, "Today, in contrast to states competing by smokestack chasing, most states now compete by innovation chasing, trying to grow and attract the highest value-added economic activity they can. The high wage, the knowledge-intensive manufacturing, research, software information technology, and service jobs that power today's global innovations-based economy." And this is what we've been talking about. These are the kinds of things that you have to have in your community if you're going to keep the 20- to 40-year-olds here, and they're going to want to raise their families here, and they're going to want to invest in this community. It goes on to say, "In the past, when cost reduction was king," again, that's in the past, "places might be able to afford not investing in good schools, a good physical environment," what we were just talking about and getting to see in that film, "and an appealing quality of life. But these are the things that mobile knowledge workers value. Without them, companies seeking knowledge workers will have a difficult time attracting them, and they will have a difficult time investing in your community." And I think that says a lot. And that's just the beginning. Also in this magazine, and what I think is really amazing, and again, remember, international exposure and over 9,000 members, there's an article in here that talks about industrial parks and business parks and multi-jurisdictional parks. The Burke County Park is mentioned in here as one of those. And I know it's empty now, but we've been working to fill it, and it still remains a partnership that, when it was done, was one of the few who had been done, especially in North Carolina. Also goes on to have an article that talks about when a university partners with local governments in innovative ways. Economic development can be the result. This is about the Department of Finance and Investment at the School of Government in Chapel Hill. And that is a department that has been set up there, that has been funded by grants from the Federal Credit Union to have UNC School of Government personnel who have been in the private sector, who have done economic development, partner with local governments in North Carolina to create economic development. That is a group that we have been fortunate to meet with, along with Burke County and the state of North Carolina, on the Broughton Reuse Project. That group is interested in getting involved in that project and helping shelter that through, and they are written up in this magazine for all the value that they can add to development projects. But I got one even better for you.
I know you do.
And this is it, and then I'll be quiet. There's also an article in here, again, economic development, that talks about Main Street, and it talks about what creating a good Main Street program and a good Main Street in your community does for your economic development. It is authored by Chuck Abernathy, who is the manager in McDowell County, and also the economic developer in McDowell County, and Patricia Mitchell, who has been an economic developer and a manager in Ash County, who is the Assistant Secretary of Commerce, who is also leading the project for the Department of Commerce for the Broughton Reuse Project with the local partners. It goes on to talk about all the things that you do in a Main Street program that creates economic development. It pictures Morganton, North Carolina, and our alleyway that we redid in one of the times that we had an art show going on in that. It pictures the courthouse, shows some wayfinding signage in Marion, shows some other economic development attractions, visual art in Ash County, and a streetscape in Statesville, North Carolina. Pretty amazing stuff. It talks about transportation enhancements, including streetscaping. It talks about economic development focused solely on promoting the downtown business district. It talks about incentives for businesses in the downtown area, of which our loan program and our Main Street grant program and our facade renovation program. It talks about facade renovations, awnings, window replacements, historic preservation. It mentions the courthouse and the facility that we are sitting in tonight in this article. Talks about placemaking as a development strategy and how placemaking and making your downtown a place that people want to be, to visit, to eat, to shop, to just be in for activities, is important to economic development. And I think that's pretty cool, and I think that that was worth talking about. I have talked with Lamar Smitherman at The Paper and asked after the elections, when time gets a little bit easier for everyone, if I could have some time with the News Herald staff because this needs to be covered in the newspaper, and all of our citizens need the opportunity to get to know about this, because I'm pretty proud that here we are, Little Morganton, with what we're doing in an international publication.
Without a doubt, and we're just very fortunate. You can listen to the rhetoric earlier in today's meeting from several people, and it doesn't correspond to the way Morganton, my hometown, is. And I love it. If they don't like it, they need to leave. Simple as that. Anyway, moving on, Municipal Power Agency.
Elections on November 18th. We will keep you posted.
Consent agenda, Sally.
Consent agenda tonight has, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 items included on it. For those of you viewing at home, that's minutes from the October 6 meeting, tax releases 200440, budget amendment for insurance reimbursements for public safety, the purchase of a pickup truck for water resources, the purchase and installment purchase financing for a truck for recreation, and the first reading of taxi cab franchises. Those will come back to you for final reading in December. Those are the items. We consider those in one motion unless someone would like items removed and discussed separately.
Like item D removed, please.
I'd like item E removed, please.
I'd like item E removed, please.
Okay. Any problems with any of the others? Make a motion that we accept the other items, A, B, C, and F on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Sally, D.
D is the purchase of a Ford F-250 pickup truck for the Water Resources Department. This is a truck purchase that you approved in the capital improvement program in the 2014-2015 budget. The garage had reviewed the truck that is being replaced last spring and recommended replacement of that. I know Brad is here and can discuss details of that, or we can try to answer questions.
What's the vehicle used for?
The V... Do you want to do that, Brad?
Hello, everybody. Yeah, the truck that we're talking about, each year when we sit down and do capital planning, I ask the staff what kind of vehicles, especially for vehicles that we want to replace, what type of vehicles are best utilized and most well suits the needs, what they need in the distribution and collection system. This truck here is actually the workhorse truck of our truck fleet. It's used almost on a daily basis, carrying heavy equipment out into the distribution and collection system. It pulls very heavy pieces of equipment. For instance, we pull our sewer vac with that. When it's full with either water or sewer, that's just a little over 4,000 pounds of just that material. We pull a trencher, a trackhoe, out into the distribution system, 10,000 pounds for the trackhoe. The trencher weighs 5,000 pounds. These types of equipment really require a pretty heavy-duty vehicle. So, that's, in a nutshell, what that truck is used for. It's utilizing... It pulls a lot of heavy equipment out in the system. We use it to maintain rightaways, things like that.
The truck it's replacing, as Project Parks said, the garage has ignition issues, injection problems, head gasket problems, and more. And the truck that is being looked at to replace it is a diesel truck. The diesel will tow 1,500 pounds more than the same gas model, is what I have been told.
Any other questions, Brad?
The problem I got is the truck that we're replacing, when we're having so much trouble out of, is a diesel, and we're going right back with another diesel. Have you talked to the people at the garage?
Some of my staff have. Honestly, this truck, it's roughly eight years old, a little over 100,000 miles. But again, the type of tasks that this truck is being utilized on a day... almost constant, daily basis, that's just the type of truck that they would recommend to be utilized. Diesel trucks, I know, they're the go-to vehicles for heavy-pulling type of activities that this truck is being used for. It's just not a pickup truck that we're putting people in, driving around to the job sites. This truck is being utilized to pull heavy pieces of equipment. And I know with a diesel, the torque requirements are a lot more taxing on a diesel, where, as a gas engine, I think, and a lot of folks would believe, that would probably give us more trouble than a diesel. I mean, honestly, those 108,000 miles that are on the truck, they weren't easy, 108,000. You're talking about 10,000 to 15,000 miles a year, but again, it's not long trips. I mean, it's pulling a heavy piece of equipment into a portion of the distribution or collection system, filling it up with material, whether sewer, water, pulling trenchers and backhoes into the rightaways, which requires a four-wheel drive. So again, those are heavily-used vehicles, and those miles are definitely hard-earned miles on that truck.
Have you ever looked into the option of a V-10?
I personally haven't, no.
Well, I stopped by the Ford place today, and I looked, and the option alone on the diesel engine is $8,500. I'm just trying to be a good steward of the taxpayer's money and save where I can. And I know some people are going to look at this as nitpicking, but you got to start somewhere.
Sure. Well, again, we're willing to look at all options. Again, we want to be good stewards as well, but at the end of the day, we need something that's going to be able to perform the way we need it to. So again, we're definitely... We could review some of those other options.
Any other questions, Brad?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a Ford F-250 pickup truck from First Place Ford Lincoln of Lenore for $38,823.43.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay. Next item, consideration and purchase of an award of installment, purchase financing for the F-350, Sally.
And a truck. This is a recreation truck. It is a diesel truck also, and it is to replace the current truck, which also is a hauler and a toer. In discussions with Jack at the garage as late as today, the truck has 119,000 miles on it at the last service. And the reason for the 350 as opposed to the 250, and Jack supports this in the conversation today, is that it tows every day. This truck tows something every single day. And he said that he was in support of this truck being a diesel, even though that has to go out for service. We understand that, that he felt like that was the best truck for this in today's discussion. This is part of what we had planned to finance in this year's CIP budget, when you looked at it last year. And so, the finance rate from BBNT is for three years at 1.79%. So there's really two things going on.
Did we get a bid? Did we take bids on this truck, or did we just order it right out of the catalog?
Actually, got it from the local dealer, and when they priced the things that are on it compared to state contract, Michael Chapman tells me we got this with the add-ons for less than state contract.
Read that.
What I'm reading in this about what's on our financing, where did we jump the track? I mean, according to this, no bank would bid on it.
Well, it's a small purchase. Originally, we had planned to purchase this at the same time as we purchased turf equipment and finance the two things together. That's also in your approved capital budget. But that bid is not ready to go. The local dealer had the truck, and they had the deal. And so, we called. BBNT was the bank willing to finance that, so you don't have three bank quotes. But I do believe that 1.79% is pretty reasonable. I'm not sure we would do better at another bank. The challenge with that is it's a $40,000 financing and not 150.
One more question, I'll shut it. I noticed that Brad's come in here asking for approval or okay on ordering this truck. This other one's already been ordered. Am I missing something somewhere?
Well, basically, it's been approved, because you approved replacing the truck in your budget that you approved, and it's an item that's listed in there. We have always brought these back to you, anything over $30,000. That's just been our, I guess, our internal policy and what we have done historically for years, for as long as I've been here, 23 years.
Sally, do you know how much the turf equipment's going to cost on the side? Any idea?
I don't think they have the full quotes for all of that, which is the reason it's not ready to go. If I remember, I want to say 60 or 80. You're really causing me to remember hard now. Hold on.
That are planned originally with the tie...
$85,000.
To tie it all together.
Tie the two together. I will say that we probably won't get... I don't think we would have gotten a better rate had it been tied together, when we look at this rate.
Karen got that right, right?
Although, we would have preferred to do it together. I mean, obviously, the less financing, the less closings that you have, the less that the staff has to go through that process.
May I make a motion to purchase an award installment purchase financing to BBNT for a 2014 Ford F-350 crew cab truck for $40,000 at an interest rate of 1.79% for a period of three years?
Second. Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. New business, public hearing in action. A public hearing for amendment of the 2013-14 Action Plan for the CDBG Entitlement Program. Sally.
And Lisa's here tonight. She's got a couple of items on the agenda. We are asking that you consider amending the action plan for the CDBG monies. CDBG monies roll over from year to year. Each year, we get a new annual budget amount, and you've got 153,000 and some odd dollars this year. And then you decide what programs we're going to fund with that. When monies don't get spent, they roll over into a new year, and tonight, we're talking about transferring some previous money into the Small Business Loan Program.
Correct. For... Anytime you have an amendment to your action plan, there is a public hearing required, so that's why we're having the public hearing. There is, as far as our 2014 action plan, there's not going to be any financial changes as far as the categories that we set the money aside. The only thing that we are doing, we're expanding our Small Business Loan Program. Usually, we only allow a loan up to 30,000. We are changing that, that you can request up to 75,000, but you also have to create at least 10 jobs. Six of those have to be for low and moderate-income persons. So that's the change as far as the 2014 action plan. The 2013 action plan, which was last fiscal year, we had some funding left over, which was $200,000, and we would like to use that with our Small Business Loan Program.
Okay, Lisa, open up the public hearing. Anybody wishes to speak for or against? Close the public hearing, counsel. Consideration of approving amendment of the 2013-14 Action Plan for the CDBG Entitlement Program and approve the resolution.
I said I had one question. I was going to hush, but got one more. Do we require... What do we have to protect our loan?
Well, it depends on what the business is. If there's items that they purchase, we always follow UCC with that. There's personal guarantees signed by the business owners, so we do have, usually have some collateral or personal guarantee for the loan.
And each of those agreements comes back to you for approval when the person goes through the loan process.
Well, I've just noticed some of our loans, we haven't been too good collecting them. And that's just the reason I want to know if we had any collateral going up, you know, if we required that.
We have the motion.
I make a motion to adopt the...
I've already got the motion. Anybody who wants a second it?
We haven't had the motion.
You made the motion?
We close the public hearing. I make the motion to adopt the amended Community Development Block Grant Action Plan, fiscal year 2013-14.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Lisa.
I'm just going to stay up here.
And did you get the budget amendment with it? Are you in a...
I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of 200,000 transferring funds from the previous years into the Small Business Loan activity.
Okay, motion, second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to point out, this doesn't pertain to this particular motion, but I would like to point out that the Burke Business Loan and the Valdez Economic Development Corporation also has for those individuals who live in, like, the three-county area, the possibility of obtaining a business loan. I understand that they have right at $700,000 now that is available for loans. So I would encourage any individual who wants a startup business or has an existing business that you'd like to expand and tied with that, of course, is a particular number of jobs, in according to the business plan that you have and according to the amount of money that you request. So, I did want to make that available and to make that public comment, that there is money that's also available to businesses through the Valdez Loan Program and the Burke Loan Program.
Okay. We have the motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Consideration of a grant award of entitlement funds to nonprofits.
Lisa's up again.
Lisa.
Okay. This was one of our activities for 2014. This is our very popular Grants to Nonprofits. We had $23,000 available this year. We received five applications. Those were received on October 20th. And I have three recommendations to make to you tonight. The Meeting Place, they requested $10,556, and we recommend that you award that. This is a homeless shelter for women and children, and they are requesting funding for some repairs for the shelter. The House of Refuge, they requested $5,000, and we recommend that you award $5,000. This is also a homeless shelter for men, and they are requesting funding for supplies for the shelter. The Outreach Center, which is our local food bank, they requested $13,300, but with our funding, we only have $7,444 left over. So this is for their food distribution program, and it's to purchase some equipment for the center.
I move to award the fiscal year 2014 entitlement funds to nonprofits as was recommended.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, consideration of a call for a public hearing on the proposed new zoning ordinance and zoning map for the city of Morganton, Sally.
In October of 2013, you initiated a process to develop a new zoning ordinance and a zoning map for the entire city. At that time, you awarded a contract of benchmark planning out of Kannapolis to assist with the process. And the goal was to establish a new zoning ordinance that would guide development in the city of Morganton for the next 10 to 20 years, and to use as a base for the process the recommendations that came out of the Mission 2030 Land Development Plan, some of the goals and objectives that were included in that plan. Since that time, a lot of things have happened. The Planning and Zoning Commission have held 11 monthly workshops for the purpose of working on the new zoning ordinance and the zoning map and the changes recommended for that. There's been a website that's been set up for folks to go on and make direct comment, to ask questions. There's been a public workshop that was held on August 28th, where the public was invited to come in and look at maps and meet with staff folks and zoning people and understand what the changes were. There's been a Joint Planning Commission City Council Workshop held on September 11th in this room. There's been a first-class public hearing notice that was mailed to all property owners on September 17th, announcing the major changes in the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 9th and adopted and have passed on for your consideration much that was included in the September 30th, 2014 draft ordinance. That recommendation comes to you with a recommendation to not do anything about the... any kind of amortization or anything regarding mobile home parks, and to ask you to consider appointing an Affordable Housing Task Force to study that and the impact on the community before there are any changes made with that. When you call for your public hearing, there will be another first-class mail notice that will be sent to everyone, again, notifying them of that hearing. And so, that's what is before you tonight.
I make a motion to call for a public hearing on Monday, December 1st, 2014, in the City Hall Council Chamber, located at 305 East Junior Street, Suite A100, to solicit public comments on the recommended draft zoning ordinance and zoning map.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion?
Sally, so everybody will get a first-class notice, correct?
Any other discussion?
And that meeting will be here.
All in favor?
At 6:00 PM. At six P.M.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I move to consider appointing an affordable housing task force for the purpose of studying existing mobile home parks and their impact on the community.
Second.
Okay, I want to name the people and you can, when you approve that motion, we'll approve the people. Marla Black, Executive Director of Habitat, Tom Bland, Chairman of the Morganton Housing Authority, Tim Norman, a landlord, Clinton Lidle, an appraiser, Waits Gordon, Planning and Zoning, Judy Francis, Planning and Zoning, used to be with the county, Bill Lennon, Planning and Zoning, Mike Urban, a landlord, Mark Henry, a local businessman. All those in that motion to be appointed at this time. We may come up with someone else in December, but they can start working whenever.
Sally, to best of your knowledge, these people will serve if asked?
They've been asked.
Okay.
And those come from the names that all of you submitted as folks to consider for that?
Are we directing in the motion and is the plan for them to report back by any particular time?
February twentieth is our workshop for the City Council of the city of Morganton and we're hoping to have, we're hoping to have recommendations from this group of Affordable Housing Task Force is the name that they're going by. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
February twentieth, twentieth will be the annual City Council Planning Workshop that we have every winter and that's what he is referring to.
The next ordinance, I mean, part of the agenda, I'm going to let Louis, Louis, you can read it and tell everybody what you're doing about it.
Okay. On the agenda stated as consideration of an ordinance to effectuate Part Nine, Chapter Two, Article E, Section nine dash two zero six four A of the City Code at 300 Fletcher Street, which is a mouthful, but for saying that this is the consideration of an ordinance authorizing condemnation of certain property under our ordinance and directing the City Building Inspector to proceed on that. However, after this was prepared for your agenda, I should advise you that as of today, we have, the city has received from the owner of this property at 300 Fletcher Street, an authorization and release for the city to proceed with the demolition and removal of twenty-one vacant, abandoned and derelict mobile homes located on that property. The, and to bill the cost, which would be incurred by the city to the owner, and if he does not pay, then to impose a lien upon the property of the same nature as if, as if it were a tax lien. This, you'll recall, is the property on Fletcher Street, the mobile home park. There are twenty-six mobile homes on the property. Twenty-one of them have been, are abandoned and have been inspected by Mike Crofts, the building inspector, and determined to be too dilapidated for human habitation. The other five are not condemned at this time and in fact are occupied. The result of this and the staff's recommendation would be for you to table consideration of the ordinance that's before you and instead to allow the city to proceed based on the specific authorization by the property owner and release with the demolition and removal of those homes as soon as possible and then the imposing of a lien on the property for the costs.
So you don't need a motion at all?
Would not need a motion at this time. That can be done administratively.
Any questions of Louis?
What, what legal authority now do we have to go do it if we don't, we don't pass this ordinance?
We have the owner's authorization, permission, release and direction to do this.
Okay. Did he send that in in writing?
Yes. We have a written affidavit, I believe it's actually notarized, isn't it, Lee? From the members of KCS Equity Ventures LLC.
Now, will we do the work or will we contract it?
My understanding is we would have it contracted. It's a little beyond our ability to do. Obviously, this is, there are so many units that it can't be done in a day or two. It may take a week or more, I don't know, but there will be a, we've already gotten proposals and there would be a contract, the cost would then be billed to the owner and assuming he doesn't pay, then it would be imposed as a lien on the property to that extent. The owner has advised us again that he's trying to sell the property and of course, remember, there would be five mobile homes not affected by this. I don't know what will happen with those, but-
Are those mobile homes that are occupied, are they owned by the property owner?
That is my understanding. I do not believe any of the residents have any title documents to the mobile homes.
And to the best of our knowledge, there are no other liens on this property?
Well, there actually are other liens, but they're ours, tax liens and nuisance mowing type liens, and I believe the county may have a tax lien as well, but there are no other liens. The mortgage that was on the property has been removed.
I got another question. Since the property owner has agreed to do this, it, has he also agreed with the, with the other provision that we were getting ready to vote on here where he will pay twice the amount of the cost of the removal?
No, sir, he has not agreed on that. His agreement and his reason for doing this was that if, we agreed if he would do this voluntarily, we would only impose a lien, we, staff, that we would only impose a lien equal to the actual cost to the city.
So what incentive do we have to? I see no incentive that we have to be willing to do this with his agreement. He, it appears to me that he's only doing this so he, he can cut the cost by half.
Well, I think that's true. That is the incentive for him agreeing to do that. But the, the point is though, I, I think you have to take into account two things. One, there are still five occupied mobile homes on that property. Secondly, if a lien is imposed of double the actual cost of removal, it raises the specter that if we have to ever enforce the lien, that we could be in a situation that no one might want to buy the property and if we foreclose the lien, the city might become the owner of the property, which may be okay, except I speculate that the city doesn't wish to become the owners of some old mobile homes, which is what, remembering that there's five still there. However, that's your, your decision certainly.
Okay, I know we're going to do what we have to do here, but I, I'm just stating the simple fact that I think the city has been more than lenient in, in dealing with this individual. We have given him, you know, many, many opportunities and as I understand it, the last opportunity that we gave him, he asked for an additional thirty days so that he could make some decision on this. We did not hear from him. He did not bother to respond. And, and I'm assuming that when he received the notice that this is coming before the council, then he decides to take some action. Maybe too little, too late, but I know that we got to do what we have to do, but I guess what's happened here, we finally forced somebody to do something and now they decided to actually do something, which I wish they'd have done it a long time ago and he could have done the same thing.
He certainly could have.
He could have been more proactive. If we don't- I've said what I had to say, so let's move on. But if we do not vote on this ordinance tonight, it speeds up the process. Is that a fair statement?
It would, although I can't honestly tell you how much it would speed up the process because, as I say, we would still have to contract with somebody to do this and I, I mean, I can't say exactly when they will have finished that. If you adopted the ordinance under our statute, you, you would have to allow some period of time, I think it usually, in the past, we've done it, is ten or fourteen days after adoption for the property owner to take that action himself anyway. So as a practical ma, and then you would still have to come back and contract, if you didn't do it, you'd still have to contract with the, somebody to remove the mobile homes and, and proceed.
So if we're nice guys, it moves this out, or no, it, it costs us two weeks.
Probably.
Or is there want to be a bad guy?
Well, well, excuse me, I, that's in, in time. Of course, it also, we don't have to go to the trouble of recording the ordinance, putting that on the books as to the property. The only thing that would be on record would be a lien imposed on the property. Of course, we'll have to record that anyway, either way.
Does anybody, I got another comment, I guess. Does anybody know what the possibility would be that the property owner is going to pay for this?
I'm making the assumption that that's a very long shot that he's going to pay it.
That's what I thought.
Sally, do we need a motion to table this resolution?
I would recommend that.
Yes, I think that's the motion and also in that to allow for us to proceed, I guess, with the authorization and put the lien on the property.
I make a motion to table the consideration of an ordinance to effectuate Part Nine, Chapter Two, Article E, Section nine, two oh six A of the City Code at 300 Fletcher Streets.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion?
And, and to be clear, unless there's going to be a separate motion and that would, would you also authorize the staff to proceed with a, George, you want to make that as a separate motion?
No, I'll authorize the staff to proceed with the legal requirements.
John, you'll second that with it?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion?
Okay, I'm not, there again, I'm, I'm not trying to be unreasonable with any of this and, and I certainly agree with what we're doing, but I, I guess from a standpoint of, of having to deal with this repeatedly, and this has been going on for how long, Sally?
A very long time, several years.
Yes, I can't even remember how long it's been so long. I'm, I'm glad to see actually something being done on it and, of course, we all want to be as accommodating as we can be and I think during the past several years, we have been very accommodating and I'm very pleased to see that some action's being taken on it now. That's it, Mr. Mayor, I'll not say anything else.
All right. We have the motion, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration to award a contract extension for the installation of the third phase of our wayfinding signage, Sally.
You'll recall that we did the first phase in 2013. The second phase is being installed as we speak and at the time that we let the contract for Phase Two, the contractor agreed to extend those same unit prices to us for Phase Three, which is included in this year's capital improvement budget, which is included at ninety-five thousand dollars. Phase Three includes thirty more signs that would be installed along the bypass, Lenora Road, Avery Avenue, East Union Street corridors into town, if you will, and we have a quote on that at the same unit price of ninety-four four sixty-eight oh five and would ask that you consider authorizing that contract for Phase Three tonight.
I move we also-
No.
No, there's one more. We divided it up into four.
I move we authorize a contract for services to Creative Impressions of North Rhodes, Georgia for the amount of ninety-four thousand four sixty-eight oh five.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consider, consideration of a contract with the First United Methodist Church for temporary use by the community house, Sally.
Also, in this year's capital improvement program, which has a lot of stuff in it, I'm beginning to realize, are building and infrastructure renovations at the community house, dealing with HVAC, with grease traps, with electrical upgrades, with realignment of the back entrance where the, the food deliveries come into the basement, all the things that really aren't very glamorous when you get right down to it and when, after you've spent the money, you're going to walk in and go, now what exactly did we do? But very necessary things in order for the community house to continue to operate. We budgeted for these this year. The architects who are in design with plans and getting bids that we'll be bringing back to you in December, at the December first meeting, have advised us that in order to do this, we're going to need to shut the facility down for about three months. So, not wanting to discontinue operations and just shut it down completely and to leave our repeat customers high and dry and our once in a while customers with no options, we've been working with the First Methodist Church. They have a facility that on a temporary basis, which is just across the street, can meet our needs. We have seen every nook and cranny at the church two or three times. They have been quite gracious in meeting with us and considering this and we have an agreement before you tonight. It would be short-term, it would begin in January and it would go through the end of April. There is an opportunity to extend it if we get into it and realize from a construction standpoint, we have to go further. It is for twelve hundred dollars a month in rent and we're going to provide some meals for church functions by agreement and also utilities we will establish, we have agreed to establish based on a two-year average for kilowatt-hours and also rates, two years, we'll take those and average them, set a base and then anything over that base during that time would be our responsibility. It's going to be our obligation to the church that we will do our best not to interfere with their church activities. They will do their best to honor our schedules and we're going to work through it and work together if you allow us to do this and make it happen.
Make a motion to approve and enter into a lease agreement with the First United Methodist Church of Morganton for temporary use of its facilities by the community house and to allow the mayor or city manager to make technical changes as necessary.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Discussion?
I think, Mr. Mayor, this, this item, as well as the wayfinding sign, is, is to a large degree tied with economic development. As we all know, progressive cities and those cities that are trying to move, move forward, get additional industry, et cetera, et cetera, wayfinding signs is, is certainly one of the, the big items. Also, I think our community house is in a state of disrepair. It, it, it needs an uplift and it's very much tied into economic development. When we have corporations who, who we're, we're trying to, to lure, so to speak, into bringing industry into our, into our city and into our county, then we have a, a decent place, a nice looking place that we can bring them to so that they can sit and have a meal. They can, we can present our city and county to them. Also, it's, it's a, it's a good place to, to show, show off the kind of community that we have and I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. That's, that's my comments.
Thank you.
I'd just like to sum up what Forrest said. I think in an accounting way, it's quite an asset to this community and the company that I'm employed by has used the catering service that is provided by the community building. It's been excellent.
And other industry, local industry have utilized the community house, some for the first time and are keep coming back. It's, they've turned the corner and we have to do this for the future of, of Morganton.
If you look in your reports that are attached that you get each month, there is a community house report and, and you, and it breaks down the groups and, and the meetings and, and the meals and you'll see that in the month of October, the community house served two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine meals. So it's very much a part of our community. I thought I'd throw that in.
Yeah.
Red vote.
Very good. Very good. Impressive. We have the motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in- All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is consideration of a Main Street Solutions Fund Small Business Grant. Sally?
Last spring, you authorized us to file an application for a second round of Main Street Solutions Fund grant money from the state of North Carolina. We had been successful in the first round that they did, and you allowed us to apply for a grant, and we were awarded a grant in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We weren't sure we were gonna get that, because in the General Assembly, all of that was held up, and the General Assembly was deciding whether they were gonna allow Commerce to fund them or not. We found it out after our budget process, and after they had decided in their budget process what they were going to do. So we need to accept the grant, and then we need to do subrecipient grant agreements, which you have in, in front of you tonight. This particular grant includes four proposals. Three of them are to local businesses, and expansions, and, and growing. Fifty thousand dollars to Hamilton Williams Gallery for a community kiln, and in a wholesale, increase in the wholesale side, complete the wholesale side of that business. That's tied to two full-time positions being created and one full-time position being retained. Fontiflora, which is a local brewery, which has been doing very well, and they are also growing. Twenty-five thousand dollars is being requested to expand and upfield a building for their growth, which is next to their current facility. That building has been vacant for twenty-five-plus years, creates one full-time job and retains eight part-time jobs. And then the Business Treat at one hundred West Union, and this is also for the outfit of that facility, creating one full-time job and a couple of part-time jobs, twenty-five thousand dollars associated with that. We'll tell you that part of the requirement for this is that it be a two-to-one ratio for how much the businesses are putting in versus how much they get in grant money, so they have skin in the game, even with the grant program. This is a grant program, not a loan program, like we did in the first round. We did some of both. We did grants to property owners, and we did loans to tenants. These are grants. The fourth one is an opportunity that we learned about in the midst of this process for the community house that we've just discussed. There need to be some kitchen renovations related to equipment, some changes, some moving around to make that more efficient. We have looked at a couple of other communities that operate a community kitchen. That is something we're exploring that would make seventy-five thousand dollars available in this grant that could go for the outfit and relay out to the kitchen. We'll tell you that today, we are not certain what the total cost of all that will be, because that's all being worked on as a part of the plans and the designs that the architects, and they've been working with the kitchen designer for this. We'll also tell you that since the time that we got into this, we've had an OSHA inspection, and we've had multiple inspections from the Health Department, as you would expect, and there's gonna be some equipment changes that we're gonna have to do as a result of those inspections. So we're in the process of putting all that together for you. This is grant money we have the opportunity to get. We have the opportunity later to turn it down or to move forward with it, but this is the schedule that we need to accept it, and I hate for us to pass up a seventy-five thousand dollar opportunity if later we want to fulfill that opportunity.
Sally, if we, is our acceptance of this contention upon the way we're spending it, or that, that's our, that's our part of it, is we pick these four uses, and the state has nothing to do with that, do they have to approve our uses?
They will approve these grant agreements and these uses, and they had preliminary proposals in for this in order to approve the original grant.
Good.
And then ultimately, these subrecipient grant agreements that you have in front of you have to go to them for approval as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the North Carolina Main Street Solutions Fund Grant Agreement, and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute and issue the grant agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Who was the second? John? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And one more.
I move to approve the three Morganton Main Street Small Businesses grant agreements as identified in the attached memorandum, and to authorize the mayor or the city manager to execute and issue those agreements on behalf of the city.
Second.
It's actually four, you're not...
Well, there's not an agreement with ourselves.
I got you. Okay.
We're not really a subrecipient.
All right.
We started down that path and realized that didn't make sense.
Okay. All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Right? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of a new resolution of intent to sell real property on South College Street. Sally?
You will recall that, that for some time now, we have been working with the senior deaf and blind group to ultimately sell this property on College Street for the development of a housing project that would serve the, the deaf and blind communities. And in the beginning of this, we had a proposal, and we had a contract, and that contract was to sell that property to them for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They deposited the proper amount of earnest money. You have extended that several times as they have been progressing with the development of their project, which was allowed within that contract. Now there is a new proposal in order for this project to happen, and it has been suggested that they would like to purchase this property in phases. The total purchase price would remain five fifty, but they would like to purchase it in phases. In order to do that, there has to be some agreement ultimately on what part of the property is included in what phase and what price is associated with that. In order to sell public property, we also have to have an upset bid advertisement process. This is a significant enough change in that contract that we need to re-advertise this. So what we're asking you to consider tonight is to appoint two of you to work with them to represent the council and determine what the phasing will be, what the pricing will be. Then that information will be advertised in the News Herald for a ten-day period, and then at your December first council meeting, you would then adopt the new amended contract. And a development agreement, as always, will ultimately be adopted that will go along with that. It covers the development of the whole project, but this is just pertaining to the contract. So...
Two motions. One, the last motion, I'm gonna name two members of the council, keep you in suspense.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution expressing the intent of the city council to consider an option to purchase certain real property of the city of Morganton located at South College Street, subject to the statutory procedures for advertising for upset bids under General Statute Section one oh six A dash two six nine.
Second.
I have a motion second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. A motion to appoint two members of the city council as a subcommittee with full power and authority to consult with the potential, with a potential buyer of the property and set a fixed two, uh, uh, or fix two terms of the contract of sale. The length or term of an option to purchase the remainder of the property and the exact division of the total five hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase price between the initial track and the option track.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion second, and those two members are Ronnie Thompson and John Cantrell. You did get my message, didn't you, John?
Got it.
Doing it now, anyway.
Got it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're going to, uh...
Get one more item.
One more. Consideration of appointment to the Redevelopment Commission, and I make a motion, Hank Dickens, to be appointed to the RDC.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a few more to come in a few months. And the last thing is, uh, we're going to move upstairs in our boardroom number four to work with our council, and it'll be an economic development project, and it's a closed session, General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, point eleven A four. And we're gonna go up there and...
It's actually multiple projects, and we do not anticipate any decision coming out of the closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
So...
For, excuse me.
For legal...
You gotta state the special, the specific section. It's printed.
Uh, General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, point eleven A four.
Which is with economic development.
Sure. Okay, you got that. That's the motion. And then, we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody opposed going into closed session? All right.
Do we get a snack?
On our way up.
Healthy living, baby.